Okay, good, good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to Council's meeting Monday, November 22nd, 2021. Holding me into order at 4:00 PM. As always, I'll remind everybody their mobile devices, turn them off or vibrate. At this time, ask for any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Yes, I have a report on the library board.
Okay.
And I have a report on.
Okay, so Counsel Debushi and Counsel Lake, report on library and DCEB. Anything else? I won't give a verbal, I'll give a verbal on my Noma, we're going up this week to do a final first strategic plan, but I'll do that follow up when we finish that up. Okay, so with that being said, I do have a motion that Council hereby accepts the agenda from Monday, November 22nd, 2021. Regime of Council circulate amended, move by.
Counsel Debushi.
Okay, any questions to that motion? Hearing none, call question on favor?
Yes.
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 Thank you. So I don't see Counsel Valance tuning in, oh, there he is there now, just come in, okay. So his five of us at the meeting. Any disclosure of interest today? Hearing none, I have a motion here that Council hereby adopt some minutes of the regime of Council were held on Monday, November the 8th, 2021, and the closed meeting of Council were held on Monday, November the 8th, 2021, as circulated or amended, move by.
Counsel Jengra.
Okay.
Counsel Debushi.
Thank you, any questions, arrows or emissions in those minutes? Hearing none, I'll call a question on favor?
Yes.
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 Great, thank you, welcome Counsel Valance.
Thanks, sorry for being late.
No, no worries, we're all good, just started. Okay, right into our student counselors' reports, we'll start off with Counsel Kavner.
Uh, thank you, uh, so we have some updates on school sports on the 16th. The senior girls' basketball team played against the Lake Superior High School in Terrace Bay, and senior boys volleyball team played in Marathon High School. The junior boys volleyball team was in Red Rock on the 17th to play against the Nipigon Red Rock District High School Lakers and the Lake Superior High School Stingers. The N triple S double A fall championships will be on Tuesday for the junior boys volleyball and junior girls basketball, and Marathon High School will be hosting. The game should be streamed. On Thursday, the senior girls' basketball teams will, and the senior volleyball teams will be traveling to Nipigon Red Rock District High School for their N triple S double A championship games. Uh, on in-school events and extracurricular events, last week was bullying prevention and awareness week, and eighty-six students signed a pledge to support the prevention of bullying in Marathon High School. We had the first lockdown drill of the year on Thursday, the 18th, at 11:00 AM, and last Friday was a PD day, so students did not attend classes on that day. Uh, there is a slight delay with report cards for the first quadmaster being sent home due to some technical difficulties printing them. Uh, there will be a mental health clinic held on the 23rd by Marathon High School and Dilico, I believe it's pronounced, uh, mental health, to discuss mental health and services and help that is available to students at Marathon High School. It will be held in the library, uh, from 1:00 to 2:00 PM for the grade nine to 10 cohort, and from 2:00 to 3:00 PM, uh, for the grade 11 and 12 cohort. Uh, the Marathon Food Bank is looking for volunteers to help with their float in the Christmas parade, uh, to walk alongside the float and help collect for restocking food bank. Uh, they're also looking for help with the Christmas hamper program, uh, collecting donations and organizing hamsters to go with families in need.
Great, thanks for that report. Counsel Miss Chicks.
Yes, thank you, um, to start us off, we have some updates to the COVID-19 for the calls at Marathon High School. Um, the lunch periods in school bathrooms have been de-cohorted. Separate cohorts are now allowed to use the same lunchroom and same bathroom. Uh, this means that students are allowed to use the bathrooms that we have upstairs and the bathrooms that we have downstairs, and all of the students are eating much in the common area. Um, we will be returning to the semester system, uh, with four classes per day for seventy-five minutes after the current quadmaster ends. It finishes on January 31st, and we will continue, um, with the semester system until the end of the school year. Now for some updates on out-of-school activities that are going on throughout the community. Many members of the community, including the youth and the parents, are getting back into the hockey season. The diff, some of the different age divisions have already been attending some tournaments out of town. The local Erica that unit has been given permission to train in person. The first in-person training will take place tomorrow. Marathon Public Library is holding a logo design contest open to Marathon High School students and recent graduates. The due date is December 15th, and the winner will receive a $100 gift card for local businesses. The fire department, uh, also has a contest going on, they've got a drawing contest. They're looking for local pieces of art to dip, to display on their new fire truck. Um, the deadline is December 24th, it's open to residents of Marathon and Bitagon. Uh, all ages are welcome to enter, the category, um, that's required to enter is a public safety message. Last but not least, the Honorable Patty Hydoo is looking for youth from across the Center Bay District to join her youth council. Uh, this is a great opportunity for youth in Marathon, it would give them the opportunity to bring their opinions and some new ideas to Canister, Canada's Minister of Indigenous Services.
Great, thanks for that report, uh, anybody have any questions of our student counselors? So, so I do personally feel that, uh, I'd like to ask a question in regards to how you're, you're all doing it back in school, and, uh, you know, we didn't, uh, we didn't have a opportunity to ask you that when we signed up because we didn't do it in person, but how's life going on with you guys and the rest of students in Marathon? With the school process, I'll start with you, Counsel Kavner.
Uh, the, the new school year hasn't been without its, uh, its difficulties, uh, but students are, uh, working through it. There are some students that are doing, uh, better than others, but everyone has been doing what they are able to.
Great, thanks, and how do you find the, I know Counsel Miss Chicks is gonna give an overview as well, but how do you find the, the uptick with the students is, is the percentage there? I know our community is fairly high percentage of second dose, but is the student population the same way? Do you know anything about that in regards to Counsel Miss Chicks?
Um, like regarding the vaccination?
Yeah, the percentage in school and the students, are they doing really well in the percentage overall?
Um, from what I've heard, yes, there is like a pretty good increase of students that are vaccinated. Um, I know with regards to sports and hockey, there's been some issues with unvaccinated people just not able to play.
Right.
Um, I've heard a couple complaints about that. But yeah, there is a pretty good percentage of students that are vaccinated right now.
Great, and I think that's the, that's the great idea and opportunity for you, uh, both as student counselors, bring down back that message, you know, being a little upset they can't play our sporting activities, but the council with through, through administration implemented those mandates to make sure that everywhere in the community was safe utilizing our facilities, so it's a good message to bring back to your student body and, uh, share with them why those things are in place. Maybe they can encourage them at that time to, uh, to get the second vaccination or, or at least get vaccinated overall, so, great, anything else, anybody? Great, appreciate it, thanks for your updates and what's going on in school and around town. Up next, we have report on 22 strategic plan priorities, Mr. Korczynski.
So the town of Marathon's strategic, current strategic plan was endorsed by council in May of 2019. The plan identifies the town of Marathon's goals over that timeframe focusing on five key areas, and that's quality of life, infrastructure and environment, economic development, organizational resiliency, and progressive leadership and collaboration. A component of the plan is to complete regular performance reviews and present them to council. Performance review and measurement ensures that the plan and the strategies contained within it are reviewed and adjusted accordingly for success. While the COVID-19 pandemic continued to engage much of the town's senior leadership team's time in 2021, an extensive amount of hard work has been put forth to advance our strategic plan and ensure community development continues to be a driving force. Some of the key accomplishments in 2021 included opening of the new peninsula golf course clubhouse, updating of the municipal accessibility plan, completion of bronze medal and bronze cross courses for lifeguarding at the port hole pool, increased community engagement, uh, which included the establishment of the waterfront recreation advisory committee. Uh, the continued work of the town of Marathon team, uh, on COVID. Uh, operation of our recreation facilities and programming during COVID, uh, which I can tell you was by no means a simple task. Uh, creation of the Economic Recovery Fund to support local businesses, uh, which was very well received. Uh, administrations' resiliency and flexibility through the ever-changing COVID challenges, uh, which are still ongoing. Uh, the approval of the alternative voting system going virtually slash electronic for the 2022 municipal election, and administration of the Community Development Assistance Fund, uh, to support local groups, uh, as well as supportive of our local economic development initiatives, such as the Group of Seven Trails Association, uh, which is receiving funding from the municipality through our municipal accommodation tax. To set the strategic direction for 2022, council and the senior leadership team had a planning session on October the 25th, 2021, and identified the following projects as priorities for 2022, which is the last year of the current term of council. Development of a new active living center funding model, completion of the recreation master plan, new residential development planning, making a final go or no-go decision on the natural gas project, proceed with the development of a new works and operations facility, continued development of the firefighter training facility, completion of the broadband project, completion of a lodging slash accommodation study, start work on the official plan update, which is due in 2025, completion of the Pebble Beach Development Project, including a camping area, and I do believe we're gonna see an announcement from the NOHFC this week on that project, the mayor will be attending, I do believe, continued modernization of our municipal IT infrastructure, development of the Port Authority with Beakdegong, support of the local mining industry, investment attraction marketing of the former mill site, and continued employee succession planning as we are moving closer to some significant retirements over the next number of years with our long-serving staff members. So with progress comes challenges, and 2022 is expected to be no different. By no means exhaustive, below is a list of challenges that will need to be addressed to continue to drive our development forward, recruitment and retention of qualified staff and professionals, access to local housing and accommodations, increasing financial pressures for ancillary services such as recycling, increasing wildlife encounters in the urban areas, as we saw this summer with respect to bears and wolves in particular, degrading and failing infrastructure due to age, government funding levels not keeping pace with inflation, managing public expectations that instant responses should be available 24 slash seven, keeping pace with technology, uh, balancing our fiscal challenges, so proceeding with economic development and new infrastructure that is required, but also recognizing the need to, uh, balance our debt appropriately and build the proper reserve funds, uh, professional burn, burnout, uh, at the senior leadership team level, uh, and decreasing volunteerism in the community. Uh, financially, projects identified in the strategic plan have been or will be included in the yearly municipal budgets as identified, uh, that process has started, and administration, uh, is working on the draft budget for council's review in January at the current time, and your administration presents this report for council's information, and of course, any questions?
Great, thanks for that report, appreciate it, anybody have any question, Mrs. Korczynski on that report? Wow, no hands, that's good, we had a very good session, thanks for that, uh, Mr. Skorczynski, in regards to the, uh, October 25th meeting, and this is where going back to even with the student counselors making comment about the volunteerism within the school system, no different in the community. It's a big part of our community and to make sure our community thrives with all parts of the organization, so we would encourage people out there to get involved and help out, and, uh, not everything can be done by the municipality and the staff, uh, it employs, but we also need, uh, we can guide and help assist, but we need volunteers in the community to, to make things happen on, on a scale that we'll all enjoy, and, uh, we hope that, uh, that continues, we're, we're lacking in that, and I know the, the school system way back, uh, in, in, you know, I think it was in 2000 and maybe one or two introduced the forty-hour volunteer program, where all students must, uh, do forty hours, and, uh, and they hopefully out of that seen students get involved in the communities after the fact of high school, so I hope that's working and, uh, and we can encourage more people to get involved. So thanks for that, and, uh, we look forward to a really prosperous 22, and we all know the election is coming up, so we'll have opportunities to have input in that process, once that comes up as well, anything else? Great, hearing none, I'll move on to the report for the, uh, the seniors' lease agreement, uh, Mrs. Goodchild, please.
Good afternoon, Your Worship Council. So the three-year agreement between the town and the senior citizen, senior citizens' club for the purpose of Lakeview Community Hall expired on December 31st, 2019. In September of 2021, administration met with the seniors' club to discuss a new one-year lease agreement to coincide with the current term of council. Key items in the new agreement, uh, in the new agreement include, the term is December 1st, 2021 to December 31st, 2022. Seniors will make a minimum rent payment of $100 on the first day of each month during the period of the term. Seniors' club can utilize the gym at no additional costs by booking through the recreation office. During the entire term of the lease, the tenant, uh, the seniors' club shall take out and maintain at its sole cost and expense its own insurance coverage. Additional COVID-19 measures were also discussed, were also discussed, which include proof of COVID-19 vaccination, capacity limits as required, a COVID-19 safety plan, active screening, mandatory face coverings, and physical distancing. The new lease agreement will generate $1,300 in net revenue to the municipality. Our options are A, enter into a new lease agreement with the Marathon Senior Citizens Club, or B, do not enter into a new lease agreement with the Marathon Senior Citizens Club. Your administration recommends option A be selected, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to enter into a new lease agreement with Marathon Senior Citizens Club for the period of December 1st, 2021 to December 31st, 2022.
Great, thanks for that report, I do have a motion here. Counsel hereby accept the attached report and recommendation on entering into a le, new lease agreement with the Marathon Senior Citizens Club, infer that the appropriate bylaw be adopted later in this evening, and, and entering to the lease agreement with the Marathon Senior Citizens Club, move by.
Counsel Valance.
Yeah, Counsel Valance, Counsel Lake, questions? Counsel Lake?
Uh, yeah, thanks, Your Worship, uh, I was just wondering, Ms. Goodchild, if, uh, so the lease is starting December, uh, I, I'm just wondering, you know, are, are we back, do we have people back in that building? I know, uh, it doesn't get used a lot, and it's, it's important that we use our facilities. Uh, have the seniors been in, or will this kind of be the start of their, their new season after cold, after cold, after COVID?
Um, so the, the executive has gone in a couple times to do some cleanup from, um, the last time they were in there, which was back in 2019, so there was, uh, some stuff still in there that they wanted to clean out and get ready. Um, and then they did utilize the gym, uh, one evening for their, uh, annual general meeting where they elected their new, um, executives. Uh, since then, they are happy to start on December 1st in their space, but the gym has been, um, very busy and has been utilized quite well.
Great, thanks, anybody else? So I just want to take the opportunity to thank the seniors' club for coming up to the municipality and getting this squared away so we can get them back in there, only question I have, uh, is in regards to the face coverings, obviously the protocol there will be in and out of the building, once they get into the building similar to any other facility, the, uh, sitting at a table and interacting, the face mask will not be mandatory?
Uh, so the face mask isn't mandatory when eating or drinking, um, but if you are, or, or if you're exercising, it's not mandatory if you're using the gym, but if you're, um, just socializing or walking around, then it is mandatory to wear a face covering.
Okay. I'm just considering other facilities where they sit and have tea, so you wouldn't be wearing a face mask, but if you're just socializing, playing pool or playing cards, the mask is required.
Correct, and that's from the Thunder Bay District Health Unit.
Yep, great, just wanted that, so great, so good luck with the seniors' club getting back in there and utilizing that facility, as Counsel Lake identified, we need to get our facilities back utilized properly. So anything else for anybody? See no hands, I'll call a question, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Great, thank you. Up next, we have, um, a motion here for the, uh, wait, I don't know, it's mixed in the bylaw number, uh, 214 being a bylaw to repeal, bylaw number 210, uh, missed one for the pay, pay here, wait. I think it's in here.
A check run.
Yeah. No, okay, anyway, I don't have a motion here, but it typically is a motion, so that's okay, we'll get that, I'll just read the motion off and we'll get it moving in a second, or we'll get it copied up. Well, I have a motion here to approve the, the, uh, check runs in the amount of $1,224,999.11 for accounts payable, and also in $175,823.69 for payroll, move by.
Counsel Valance.
Counsel Jengra.
Okay, Counsel Valance, Counsel Jengra, any questions? Hearing none, call a question on the favor?
Yes.
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 Great, thank you, okay, up next now, I have reports on the appointed members, uh, and boards to committees. First up, Counsel Debushi, library.
Uh, yes, I just, uh, as note, uh, the library hours moving forward are Monday, uh, Mondays 10 to 5, Tuesdays and Wednesdays 10 to 6, Thursdays and Fridays 10 to 5. Uh, Christmas closure this year will occur December 23rd to January 3, 2022. Also of note, you are required for proof of vaccinations and to enter the library, however, you are excluded from that if you are going to access, um, the library to get your proof of vaccination or for lamination services. The other thing too is if you are unvaccinated or partially vaccinated, uh, the curb side and phonian services are still available to you, um, your, um, I guess the services you required will be delivered to you, um, at the store or at the library front, thank you very much.
Okay, any question, Counsel Debushi on that? No, great, okay, Counsel Lake, uh, in regards to the DCEB, please.
Uh, thanks, Worship, we had our, uh, annual budget meeting for DCEB, and it is, uh, I mean, it's a large budget, it's a hundred million dollars, uh, but most of it is flow-through, it's, uh, you know, we offer, uh, services that are Ontario Works, uh, public housing and, and childcare, early-year centers, so most of the money is spoken for, but in the end, the things that most counselors, municipalities worry about is how much is the increase, uh, and, uh, we got down to a increase that'll be less than the CPI, so it will be a, a very small reasonable increase. And then the other big item that's kind of come up in the news, and, and it was good to see being addressed by DCEB was, uh, uh, drugs and violence in DCEB properties, uh, it's made the news quite a bit lately, so we had some, uh, background information and, uh, assurances that we are working with, um, landlord tenants, agencies and the police to make sure that those buildings are, uh, safe and that, uh, our, our residents are, are safe in them, so, uh, those were kind of the two big items that came out of that.
Great, anything on that, any from anybody? Okay, thank you for those updates and reports. Up next, we have some bylaws, bylaw number 214, sorry, 2014, a bylaw to repeal, bylaw number 2010, being a bylaw to adopt a chief official for the Corporation of Town and Marathon to be, uh, read a first, second, and third time, and finally passes 22nd day of November, 2021. So, move by.
Counsel Valance.
Okay, and Counsel Lake, any questions of that bylaw? No hands, all in favor?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry, could I, uh?
Oh, yeah, sure, Counsel Lake, yeah.
I couldn't find my button quickly enough.
That's okay.
So, uh, with a new CBO, will they be in Marathon kind of available to public or five days a week, or are there kind of hours that they're, uh, available, how is that gonna work?
Yeah, so it's a, yeah, good question, um, so we, we currently, uh, Owen Cranny, uh, previously of the Township of Mads Watch has joined us on a contract basis until April of 2022, uh, to help us, uh, fill the gap to hopefully find a new CBO. Uh, currently, right now, uh, Mr. Cranny's in Marathon on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, um, in the office, uh, at Town Hall. Um, but the other option we're utilizing, uh, where we know generally, we don't see a lot of permitting at this time of year, uh, just because the, the construction season is over. Um, but we do have the availability to do a lot of the preliminary work, um, digitally, so, um, the process hasn't changed. You know, if you have questions, the first place I would start is, is on our website, we have a lot of materials available there. You know, do I need a permit or don't I need a permit? Uh, and from there, you can, uh, contact Mr. Cranny or, uh, you know, the Town Hall, and, uh, we'll direct you to the right place.
Good, anybody else? Okay, I'll call a question on the favor, oh, Counsel Lake, no problem.
You know, and, and this is just more of a comment, I guess, because we're, we're on air is, uh, my experience has been, since I've been on council, that when people come home that are from Marathon and fill positions, it goes really well, like I look around at, at the hospital or the schools or wherever, if you're from Marathon and you come back and you work, it tends to be a great fit, so I would just say, if you know somebody out there who has those, uh, wants to come home and has that kind of skillset, we're gonna be looking again real soon, aren't we? And I, I just always feel when people come back, we do better, that's all I wanted to say.
Yeah, we have, we have three active postings, uh, you, we've been trying to recruit a CBO for the better part, since Mr. Kirster retired, to be honest, which is probably approaching, uh, four or five years now. Uh, and we have two manager postings as well, so, you know, I would agree, it's, uh, you know, the, the hiring field is extremely challenging right now, there's a tremendous amount of competition, um, you know, but I will speak from experience, but, uh, yeah, we like to see when we have, uh, Marathon names, uh, in our hiring mix, no question.
Great, thanks, so I'll call a question, uh, all in favor?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Carrie, thank you. And just a little note for our student council, I shared this at the beginning of your swearing-in, anytime you feel like you don't understand, you want to ask a question, by all means, please step in and ask a question of something that, you know, intrigues you or tweaks you to, to understand better. So, up next, I have bylaw number two, 2015, being a bylaw to authorize the execution of the agreement between the town of Marathon and the senior citizens' club to be read a first, second, and third time, finally passed this 22nd day of November, 2021, move by.
Counsel Jengra.
Counsel Valance.
Thank you, any questions of that bylaw? Hearing none, I'll call a question on the favor?
Yes.
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 Carrie, thank you very much. Up next, we, uh, we have resolutions from Kitchener in regards to the liquor license sales on the patio extensions, and further copy this motion before we run to the individual list under originating resolution, I'll get it moving in a second, I put on the floor.
Counsel Lake.
Counsel Valance.
Hey, Counsel Lake, Counsel Valance, and I'll read the therefore, what it basically is, is asking the province of Ontario through the Liquor License Control Board, the, uh, the Alcohol Gaming Commission of Ontario to extend and relax the, the regulations around and therefore be resolved that the AGCO proposed complete comprehensive review of the temporary extension of liquor license, sales and temporary patio extensions, regulations for the city of Kitchener, including volunteer and participate in any pilot programs that would allow current regulations to be in effect till 3:00 AM on January 1, 23 to be maintained, and the city would like to continue to show support for the local businesses. This also goes throughout the province, I mean, it's a little cool in northern Ontario in, in January to have patios, but if people are willing to sit out there with a heater, what, what the heck, right? So this is for all, basically, all businesses and bars and restaurants that want to have the, uh, the relaxed regulations in place and continue to have them after, because we're not out of COVID yet, so I think it's just, it's a good resolution to support, anybody else? Hearing none, I'll call a question on the favor, oh, Counsel Debushi, yes?
Um, I understand that the businesses are suffering and want, and that portion, and I also understand that, um, extending it though, um, shouldn't be the mandate of, it should be based on, I'll say, science, um, with the current regulations about capacity, one of the big concerns is we are gonna be stuck inside, especially in northern Ontario, and to increase capacity limits at this size, um, at this time without, I'll say, backing of science or backing of the support of, I, I'll guess, the medical experts, I, I think it's somewhat premature. I would think, I would hope, sorry, that the provincial government is listening to the experts in the field and saying, you know, could the increased capacity in, uh, indoor space, especially in the wintertime, uh, may not be the best idea, so at this point, I can't support this, I support that they look into, uh, the science of it, but I can't support that they, I'll say, encourage it because of the, um, I guess, the fact that we haven't eased the restrictions as of yet.
Okay, Counsel Lake?
Maybe I misread it, I, I thought this was for outdoor patio spaces, not for indoor spaces, did I read that incorrectly?
Yes, it's basically, that, so I'll just, this, the paragraph therefore be resolved is for the patio areas, such as not requiring the prescribed physical barrier situation has been laid out in regards to numbers now, so it's more for the outside patio than is for inside, and so that's the, the ask for the Alcohol Gaming Commission. Okay, so with that being said, Counsel Valance?
I was just gonna say I support it.
Okay. Okay, uh, I'll call a question in, in favor of, uh, of this support of this resolution.
Yes.
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 Okay. Opposed?
Yes.
Okay, Carrie. Thank you. Up next, we have a motion here that council hereby supports the attached resolution received from the municipality of Chatham, Kent pertaining to the vaccine passport program. And further that copy this motion before we run to the individual's listing on the originally resolution. Move by.
Counselor Jingra.
Okay, Counselor Lake, Counselor Jingra. And I'll read the, uh, the therefore be resolved that, uh, the city of Kitchener thank the province of Ontario for developing a vaccine passport program, but urged the province to provide financial support for businesses to cover the capital human resources costs necessary to execute the program in its set program fees. As we all know, the resolution also asked that the Honorable Premier Ford be looking at this and as well passing on to Mr. Missile Fair and Housing. And we all know what it is. You go out to a restaurant or to a bar to call, they have somebody at the door. They're checking all vast vaccine passports, which is great. And, uh, you know, somebody has to do that. So that's a cost to the businesses. So I don't know if there's any money left in the coffers, but I do support the, the motion to go back to the government to see there can be some assistance. Uh, anybody else, Counselor Valens?
Yeah, what is the likelihood with, um, us going back to the government to ask for assistance that they'll put it back onto the municipality is to assist the employers within their community? Like, do we, are we not foreshadowing it's gonna be downloaded back to the municipality or? And what is the likelihood that, um, we could do an economic recovery fund round two if, say, our business community here in Marathon needed or required the support?
Right. And I, and I think we are okay right now. We haven't seen that, that demand come to us, but I, I believe that the resolution recognizes the province to help assist, whether there's some kind of tax break, some flexibility within some licensing fees, whatever that might be. So there's many more options that the province has than we have, but that very well could be the situation if they do decide to come back, but that's okay. We'll deal with that if that's case when it's presented. Counselor Dubushi?
Uh, again, um, I'll just state, I, I understand that, that, you know, the costs, uh, are passed on to the, I'll say, the businesses, but then again, the back businesses pass it on to the, the consumers in a sense. Um, I don't think it's ominous for, um, bars or restaurants to be asking for the idea, ID or, or whatever on the passports. It's no different than a bar asking to check your ID, um, if you enter, if you're over, you know, nineteen years of age. So I, I just think this is unnecessary that we keep saying that COVID, you know, COVID is a tough time, but again, there's, there's, uh, businesses are trying to recover and I, I think even the government is gonna have to try and recover. So I just, again, I just can't support something that, um, you know, you can't quantify how much it's gonna be.
Okay. I, I know I, I seen the premier today made a couple announcements in regards to supporting a business continuing forward with, you know, with the winter coming on. So maybe that's some of the talks they're having. But they also identified that there were some three hundred thousand plus jobs right now that are vacant and, and it's getting, uh, really worse towards getting better in regards to, uh, to staffing levels. So let alone it might be an increased cost to the business community right now, they can't even find staff to man the doors to, to open up their restaurants or bars to have people come in. And I know Counselor Valens works with that every day and he can attest to that. I'm sure that's very hard to fulfill some of the requirements and jobs that we have right here in our own community in our backyard. So, um, it's, it's really funky how there's, there's all the jobs out there, nobody to fill them. Uh, so what's the answer? Counselor Dubushi?
Pay a livable wage.
Well, I think they're, 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 he did say they're trying to get there. Fifteen dollars an hour is not there yet, but uh, let's, let's continue to push that through our different organizations to the government to, to see that, but um, the, whether you're not working or not, fifteen dollars is better than nothing, I guess. So you gotta get started somewhere. Okay? Uh, with that being said, I'll call a question. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
Uh, opposed.
Opposed.
Okay, I vote in favor of this, uh, just to bring it to the information of the government. Thank you. Okay, prior to adjournment, a couple of announcements, uh, the, obviously the students have recognized the, this weekend being a a request for volunteers for the parade through the food bank. I would encourage everybody to get out and, uh, and enjoy our, our parade this year. Uh, you know, it's, uh, typical, we've had great success in the past. It starts at six o'clock, a usual route, uh, through from the high school down to the, uh, Lakeview Community Center. Um, I hope it's a nice evening and, uh, encourage everybody to bring some, some stuff over for the food bank. Help all your fellow residents as best you can, uh, and get out and enjoy and, uh, you know, watch the corridor of the streets, because mostly, most everybody has fun from all years I participated. So it's a, it's a really good time. Other than, it's a really cold and miserable night, but hopefully it won't be. Anything else? Okay, that's it. Uh, we have a in-camera meeting following this meeting directly to discuss, uh, personnel matters. Uh, no, sorry, discuss acquisition of, uh, uh, land in the municipality and local board, uh, uh, in our closed meeting. So with that being said, I have a adjournment of the hour at four thirty-five PM, uh, this meeting. Move by.
Counselor Valens.
Hey, Counselor Valens, Counselor Lake, thank you very much. And have a good night, everybody.
Good evening.
Bye, everyone.
Carrie, thank you all. Okay.